All right. Good morning, and welcome to the June 25, 2024 Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. We call this meeting to order. If you are able, will you please rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to staff announcements. Is there any staff in the room? Our assessor, welcome.
Mr. Chair, I'm the board commissioner, CEO of CHOP. Hi, your day. Because yesterday, in a record time, we closed our assessment role in eight hours. So for the 2024 assessment role, the total net less exemptions is $10,001,56,652. This is an increase of $450 million over the 2023 rule and about 4.33% increase over last year. I will be sending over the certification to the auditor later today. At this time, I'd like to thank my staff. I'm very proud of the work they completed this year. They put in overtime to value and process over 7,300 secured and over 4,300 unsecured assessments. I feel it's a job well done. And lastly, I'd like to thank the board for funding and supporting our budget in the last. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, your whole team.
Good job.
Cory, come on down.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Cory Allen, Health and Human Services. I really just wanted to acknowledge today, after you had your presentation from OES and our fire chief, I did want to come in today and say what a huge thank you to the Health and Human Services Agency staff who said yes when they were asked to respond in real time to a very critical issue. They manned all of our call center and they manned two shelters throughout Calaveras County. So to each individual that said yes to the ask, I just have to say thank you. So that's what I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think on behalf of the board, we thank you.
Other staff.
Doug?
Morning, Chair, members of the board. That all over Chief Building Official. I'm just here to announce the new program starting July 1st in the Building Department. We will be tying electronic inspections to our online permit process. So for any licensed contractors in our community, if they want to sign up for this program, they will not only be able to obtain permits and request inspections online, but they can also perform the inspections through pictures that will be uploaded through our permit tracking software. This serves to speed up our inspections. We don't have to wait for the drive time between spots. So that should double the productivity of anybody who's doing these small permit projects. It also saves the contractor time. A roofer can strip the roof, take pictures, submit their inspection, and immediately start covering in most cases. Once again, this is for the licensed contractors in our community. It's entirely voluntary, and we're looking forward to getting that started. Our website will be updated by the end of this week with all of the documentation, and our staff will be ready to train any contractors who want to participate in the program on how to access and request those inspections. If there's any questions, others can reach out to me, 209-754-2823.
Thank you, Doug. Are there staff announcements in the room? Are there any online?
We have none online.
All right. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to recognitions and acknowledgements.
Item one, proclamation, Health and Human Services. Adopt a proclamation honoring Sharon Connell for 28 years of dedicated service to Calaveras County and congratulating her on her retirement.
Thank you. I will pass the microphone, the gavel, to Supervisor Stopper.
Right. Good morning. This is a proclamation honoring Sharon Connell for 28 years of service. That's quite the run.
That's a.
Roger on the row.
Not one.
Whereas Ms. Connell began her career at the Health and Human Services Agency in 1996. Whereas Sharon has committed her career to ensuring the safety of children in Calaveras County through her work in child welfare as a social worker and supervisor, working the majority of her career in the major or in the emergency response unit, and most recently overseeing continuous quality improvement. And whereas her unwavering dedication to the families she served and county residents has been instrumental in ensuring that changes and advancements to social work practice positively impact the community while considering the unique challenges and strengths of a small rural county like Calaveras. And whereas Sharon's journey within the agency, working up from an entry level position to her current role, is a testament to her dedication and hard work. And whereas her invaluable contributions to emergency preparedness and response, especially during critical times such as the Butte Fire, where she assisted the community while her own family was displaced, have shown her extraordinary commitment to the community under the most challenging circumstances. Curious.
Good morning, Neila Johnson, Deputy Director of Services. I just really wanted to take a moment to thank you all for recognizing Sharon's contributions to our team and to our community over the last 28 years. She has been pivotal in our child welfare team throughout her time here, through ups and downs, through lots of staffing changes. She's been, she really is a rock in our team. And as much as we are going to miss her, and she will leave a really big hole, we really want to congratulate her on her retirement and on, don't you do that. And for everything she's done for our community over, over her career here. So we're really proud. Thank you, Sharon.
Do you like to say something, Sharon?
Please, please.
Or would you have anyone else about the news?
As you said, it has been a run, and it has been every day in a row. I'd just like to thank Calaveras County for being here. It's been nice to work 10 minutes from home and five minutes from the school my kids attended. I have seen lots of people come and go. You know, I don't call them my coworkers. They're my friends. And I.
Thank you.
Need another moment of comment?
Right. Hello, Tamara Davis, Program Manager for Children's Services. I have known Ms. Sharon for a very long time. I first met her in 89. I had a period of time where I was needing emergency pregnancy-only Medi-Cal, and she was my eligibility worker. And she was amazing. And so I had no idea that all these years later, that we would become colleagues and work together for so many years and do 4-H together. And I'm really going to miss her. I just want to congratulate her.
With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments from the board?
Just congratulations. I mean, what you've done for our community, you've made us better, and you've protected some of our most vulnerable people as you've gone through. So thank you for your service to your community. And with that, I'd make a motion.
And I want to thank you, Sharon, for everything you've done and all the time you've spent here in Calaveras County, just working for the county. And with that, I will second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass a 5-0 vote of the board. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras this 25th day of June 2024 does hereby honor and recognize Sharon for her nearly three decades of dedicated service, leadership, and commitment to health and well-being of its citizens of Calaveras County. Be it further proclaimed that upon her retirement, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors wishes Sharon a future filled with happiness, fulfillment, and the same dedication and passion that she has shared with our community and its residents. Thank you, Sharon.
Sharon, yeah, let's take a photo.
I don't know.
What's your proclamation?
I'll follow.
Oh, okay.
Why?
Hey, Nora, do you want to give your?
Come on.
I want to speak.
Hi.
I speak for.
I'm really down for you.
She's not with right.
The French, so what's your proclamation?
I'll follow.
Oh, okay.
Why?
She's.
It's just like.
Hey, Nora, do you want to give your?
Come on.
I want to speak.
Hi.
I speak for.
I'm really down for you.
She's not with right.
The French, so what's your proclamation?
I'll follow.
Oh, okay.
My.
Why?
She's.
Thank you.
Hey, Nora, do you want to give your?
Come on.
I want to speak.
Hi.
I speak for.
I'm really down for you.
She's not with right.
The French, so what's your proclamation?
I'll follow.
Oh, okay.
My.
Why?
She's.
It's just like.
Hey, Nora, do you want to give your?
Come on.
I want to speak.
Hi.
I speak for.
I'm really down for you.
She's not with right.
The French, so what's your proclamation?
I'll follow.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I'm really down for you.
Thank you all very much. We will now move on to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
All right. Thank you. I think everybody here understands the drill. There'll be three minutes. Follow the lights, red, yellow, green. And if it's regarding an item that's on the agenda, and it's a very long agenda, I will ask you to stop and speak to that agenda item when it comes up. So no further ado, public comment. Who would like to speak? Please, sir, come on up.
My name's Kevin Johnson, resident of Calaveras County for over 24 years, 25 years. I've had some issues going in Calaveras County in the last three years I'd like to address to the board, especially Mr. Toffinelli, who was here. A question about your grand jury. Who runs the grand jury along with you guys? Who runs it? Who deals with the grand jury when we file a complaint with the grand jury? Who answers complaint?
Sure, we don't have a dialogue.
You don't have a dialogue?
Yes.
Well, my statement is, first of all, this is how it's going to go down. I'd like Mr. Toffinelli to resign pending an investigation of the ongoing. You guys have got my notifications, my public notice requests and all that, haven't you?
Sir, this is not.
Well, I'm just asking. Okay, so you haven't done that. So I'm asking for your resignation. And if you're the chair, I'm asking for your resignation. For the discrimination and the practices that's been going on in this county, I worked for a much larger county, which is a larger budget Alameda County, for almost 30-some years in the fire service. I've seen nothing but bad going on in this county. Gary, you know yourself. We ain't got nothing good to say about each other. You were on my road department, and you guys just screwed me over there. You tried it here. So I will be back next month to be on the agenda. Okay? Excellent.
Is there a public comment?
Is there a public comment?
Is there further public comment in the room? Sir, come on up.
Please.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, board. Good morning, staff. I'm here this morning to introduce myself. My name's Alex Blum. I'm the Economic Development Manager for Motherlode Job Training and the Central Sierra Economic Development District, which Calaveras County is a part of. I'm also the steward for the comprehensive economic development strategy for this area. So I just wanted to come today, introduce myself, and give thanks to the board for their contributions to CSED as well as Calaveras County. I look forward to working with you all, and I'll stay till the end and pass out business cards. I just wanted to come today, attend, and be present for your board meeting. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Is there other public comment in the room? Very well, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda's items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Are there any board members who'd like to remove an item from the agenda? Consent agenda.
Chair, I don't want to remove anything, but I'd like to abstain from voting on items 10 through 15.
Sir.
Please, sir.
Thank you. Any staff that have any items they'd like to remove from the consent agenda? The members of the public that would like to remove something from the agenda?
12, please.
Could you come up?
12, please, Supervisor.
Thank you.
We have no online request.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, Supervisor, excluding item number 12, which we'll pull from the agenda. And for the record, therefore, Supervisor Hubbard is abstaining from item 10, 11, 13, 14, and 15.
I'll move the remainder, sir.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppers, or second?
Yeah.
Second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carries 5-0. We'll move on to item 12.
Item 12, Resolution Administrative Office. Adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2024-25 recommended budget for the distribution of transient occupancy taxes to the Calaveras Visitors Bureau.
Thank you. Chris, would you like to come up?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Christopher Buckner. You've all received an advance copy of the following comments and recommendations regarding the proposed TOT allocation of $400,000 for the Calaveras County District III Supervisor-led Calaveras Visitors Bureau in the county's fiscal year 24-25 budget. I'll now read those comments and recommendations for the official public record and for evidentiary purposes. The Martin Hubbard-led CVB ceased to be a California Public Benefit Nonprofit Corporation nearly three years ago in July 2021, yet the CVB continues to publish bylaws on its GoCalaveras website that misrepresent the business bureau's legal status as a public benefit nonprofit corporation, when in fact, it is a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation. This intentional misinformation perpetuates a false narrative and misleading public impression of where public TOT funds are being allocated. While receiving nearly $2 million in public TOT funding over the last five years, the CVB routinely misleads the public and its government benefactors concerning its fiscal impact to the county by failing to adjust its reporting for inflation and therefore failing to accurately report the real purchasing power of the county's annual tourism revenue. In real dollars, utilizing the U.S. government's Consumer Price Index for accuracy, the fiscal impact of the CVB has in fact experienced negative or flat growth under Hubbard, as I previously stated to you and published to calaveras2024election.com. District III Supervisor, in his conflicted role as Executive Director of the CVB, has been the subject of an ongoing FPPC investigation since July 2023, case number 202300471, for evidence of campaign finance violations during his 2020 campaign for District III Supervisor for his failure to disclose multiple sources of income as the CVB Executive Director and Chamber of Commerce CEO. For those reasons, the Board of Supervisors is urged to conditionally place the CVB on financial probation for fiscal year 24-25 until the outlaw Business Bureau I has finally remediated its delinquency as a California mutual benefit nonprofit corporation II, District III Supervisor Martin Hubbard has resigned as Executive Director of the CVB due to his breach of fiduciary duty and conflicts of interest. And III, the CVB has liquidated the remainder of its rainy day fund to $150,000 reserve, at which point the CVB may request incremental infusions of TOT funds as needed for operations in three tranches of $100,000 each contingent upon meeting performance objectives for a total allocation of $300,000 in fiscal year 24-25. My name's Christopher Buckner. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments on this item in public? Any discussion from the board? Supervisor Stoppers?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Stoppers on number 12.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carries 4-0, one, sentience. Thank you. Move on to the regular agenda. Item 46.
Item 46, ordinance, human resources. One, adopt an uncodified ordinance amending the county's contract with the California Public Retirement System in order to add the optional purchase of service credit for a service within the Peace Corps, AmeriCorps Vista, or AmeriCorps for local miscellaneous members. And two, authorize summary publication.
Judy?
Good morning, Chair Germinde, members of the board. This is the, we are bringing back the ordinance for final adoption, and this is adding, changing our Calaveras contract for our miscellaneous members, which is all members outside of safety, adding the option for service credit for Peace Corps, AmeriCorps, Vista, and AmeriCorps. Is there any questions I can answer?
I believe there are some folks who want to speak to this as well.
Thank you so much. Chair, members of the board. Cory Allen, Health and Human Services. I wanted to let you know that in my tenure working in county government, I worked five years ensuring placements of AmeriCorps members in specifically child welfare services. So there's a child abuse prevention sort of category of AmeriCorps member. They come with lived experience and work either as coaches or volunteer development coordinators to ensure a robust package of support for individuals navigating that complicated system. Many of those individuals served more than one year, and many of those individuals also later became members of county government, taking the experience that they had and furthering their careers, supporting their community. So I wanted to say just what a wonderful idea this is, to allow them to benefit from PERS support during their time as AmeriCorps.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Good morning. Colleen Rodriguez, Deputy Director of Calaveras Public Health. You know, Peace Corps volunteers, AmeriCorps volunteers, and Vista volunteers are the exact kind of people we need in our community. They're people who raise their hand and say, I want to serve. They're people who go to places that are difficult to serve, they're isolated oftentimes, and they do it because they have a passion and a dedication to service. I can think of no one better to come and serve our community. Public health right now, we're back to a 39% vacancy rate. And this ordinance would help us tremendously with retention and recruitment. And so I really encourage us to start thinking creatively on how we can get folks to our amazing community and how we can get folks to stay in our amazing community. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any public comment on this item? Is there a motion from the board?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Follendorf, second by Supervisor Toffinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to Supervisor announcements.
Please.
Who wants to start?
Who?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Thank you. Supervisor Stoppers?
Well, you know, I'm glad our lead on CSED showed up. You know, after quite some time, it'd be underneath Dave Teeny, which runs Motherlode Job Training Agency. You know, we were able to bring him in underneath their health and plan and everything else. So you know, I'm confident that we have someone to guide the ship moving forward and that's dedicated to our economic development and everything within the five-county region. So.
Thank you. Supervisor Follendorf?
Good morning.
Go ahead.
So this week, we had two town halls. The council of government is having the town hall on the county active transportation and recreation trails plan. The first meeting will be this Wednesday on the 26th from 5:30 to 7:00 at Valley Springs Elementary. The second meeting will be at High School in the multipurpose room from the same time, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. If you're not able to attend either of those open houses, you can also go online to walkandbikecalaveras.org. So it's walk A and D bikecalaveras.org. And then second on Sunday, the county staff board has been invited to the Copper Valley Town Square barbecue thanking all those responders from the fire last week. And that event starts at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffinelli?
I have nothing to report.
Sir, who's average?
Amanda reported important.
Thank you, Chair. On June 17th, I attended the Housing Partnership Workshop with Lee Kimball and Stacy Johnston, and then the Sierra Jobs First Zoom, which was very interesting. And on the 24th, which was yesterday, the Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting. And actually, it's, it's really starting to hit now as far as the state budget because ultimately CSCSA is now looking at 106,000 to 108,000 cut in their budget. And so it's sad when it comes down to child support.
I would agree. That's very sad. I have nothing to report. I want to just express on behalf of the board again, thank you to all the people who worked in the Arrow Fire and in Copper, Health and Human Services, our fire, our police, Public Works, everybody who did such an excellent job. I'm sorry that we've had so much practice at setting these things up, but we're getting pretty good at this.
on the county Active Transportation and Recreation Trails Plan. The first meeting will be this Wednesday on the 26th from 5:30 to 7:00 at Valley Springs Elementary. The second meeting will be at High School in the multipurpose room from the same time, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. If you're not able to attend either of those open houses, you can also go online to walkandbikecalaveras.org. So it's walk and bikecalaveras.org. And then second on Sunday, the county staff board has been invited to the Copper Valley Town Square barbecue thanking all those responders from the fire last week. And that event starts at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli?
I have nothing to report.
Sir, who's average?
Amanda reported important.
Thank you, Chair. On June 17th, I attended the Housing Partnership Workshop with Lee Kimball and Stacy Johnston, and then the Sierra Jobs First Zoom, which was very interesting. And on the 24th, which was yesterday, the Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting. And actually, it's really starting to hit now as far as the state budget because ultimately CSCSA is now looking at 106,000 to 108,000 cut in their budget. And so it's sad when it comes down to child support.
I would agree. That's very sad. I have nothing to report. I want to just express on behalf of the Board again, thank you to all the people who worked in the Arrow Fire and in Copper, Health and Human Services, our fire, our police, Public Works, everybody who did such an excellent job. I'm sorry that we've had so much practice at setting these things up, but we're getting pretty good at this. And thank you, guys, and thank you all very much. With anything else? Madam CEO? Clerk?
Go on.
Anything else, Ted?
No, just it was wonderful to run with Supervisor Huberty and you, Chair Garimendi, this morning, and along with Rebecca Turner at the Special Olympics torch run. So thank you for inviting us and being part of that.
Well, thank you very much for organizing. And thank you for the Sheriff's Office and Supervisor Huberty for bringing this forward. And Supervisor Follendorf, who greeted us along with our CEO at the end of the run. I'm sure next year Supervisor Follendorf will be doing it with a baby cart. So with no further ado, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Sorry, closed session?
I'm sorry. We'll be going into closed session.
We'll report out at next meeting.
And we'll report out. Do we need to leave that in?
Yes. Item 47, pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, reexisting litigation, Bradman versus County Workers' Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ 16680200.
If there's any public comment. See no public comment, we will go into closed session, and we will adjourn at the close of that meeting. Thank you.